Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for all of those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held March 13, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have two. Next Monday, March 18th, at 5:45 PM, we will hold a public hearing on Item 6A. It's regarding two-hour parking restrictions at 934 Beach Street. And secondly, I would just like to welcome, we do have a group of students from Scranton Prep here today, so we'd like to welcome you to our meeting. And that is all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. First, a shout-out to city employees involved in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and even to you marchers. I thought it was extremely well-done. It was a very enjoyable event on Saturday. And now, the stormwater management. After reviewing the Arcadis study, the city's RFP, and articles in the Times-Tribune, I have several questions, and I would ask you not to answer my questions until fifth order. So let's start with, first, the Times-Tribune article on March 9th that Jim Lockwood wrote. First, this article raises many timeline and budget questions. Let me quote, "A stormwater management authority likely won't be up and running this year," he, Mr. Bolzoni, said, unquote. How does this square with the budget figures in the Arcadis plan, namely, an average of $1.44 million per year, starting in 2019 this year, and continuing through 2023? I saw nothing in the 2019 operating budget for stormwater expenses, and I pointed that out when we were reviewing the budget. Also, the Arcadis plan calls for $250,000 in seed money, which will be repaid once stormwater fee revenues are generated. Is this seed money anywhere in the 2019 operating budget, and if so, where? Number two, the Times-Tribune article quotes Mr. Bolzoni as supporting "a regional approach to stormwater management," even though one of the options in the Arcadis study is to have DPW assume all responsibility, thereby negating the need for a stormwater management authority. And I quote, "Using a regional approach, there's a more efficient distribution of costs," Bolzoni said, unquote. Keep in mind that the city's RFP for Stormwater Project Engineering Services calls for a regional approach. So what discussions, if any, have taken place with the county commissioners or other municipalities, to include Dunmore? And what discussions, if any, have taken place with DPW? And are there any issues with DPW's current union contract? Number three, with regard to the final stormwater implementation study dated May 31st, 2018, why was there no public discussion of this document back in 2018? Arcadis describes two basic options. One, creation of a stormwater management authority as either a paper, a managing, or an operational entity. And two, having DPW carry out all stormwater functions in-house. Mr. Bolzoni's comments to the Times-Tribune and the RFP both suggest that the DPW option is off the table. Nevertheless, creation of yet another municipal authority raises problems. The Arcadis plan points out at least one of them, and I quote, "Realizing that this new authority has no operating capital, we recommend that the city of Scranton transfer startup money to the newly-created authority to get started, and that this money be repaid to the city within one year as stormwater fee revenue is generated," unquote. So where is this startup money in the budget? I assume this is the $250,000 in seed money I mentioned earlier. Number four, speaking of money, what happens if we fail to generate enough revenue to cover the projected $1.44 million annual stormwater costs? Is there a Plan B, other than raising taxes? Finally, there is the question of timelines, as you heard this afternoon. We are far behind Luzern County in getting stormwater management off the ground, and our current MS-4 permit will expire on October 31st. The RFP calls for a maximum 30-month endeavor. If we opt for a regional authority, how long before we get it? How long before we have the needed personnel and equipment in place? And will we be able to renew our MS-4 permit in the next 234 days? And why did this study take two and a half years? I look forward to your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Schumacher?
I was going to start with some SAPA questions I have because of the overlap, and I will go back to those, but I'll start with the Arcadis, the bigger things. First of all, I hope we all understand that the direct rate may be a given, but as was alluded to tonight, I have a concern about the pass-through price increases. We're going to have an increase in goods and services from the absorption of this fee on commercial properties, and there also will probably be an increase in our city and county budgets, as they have to increase their budgets to pay these fees. So it's not just an $8, it's $8-plus. The issues not addressed at all, in my estimation, and I want to thank Mr. Lockwood for making those documents available, so we could read them before tonight. But the issues that are not addressed at all, but are logical to me, such as, street sweeper. Now, on one of the options they had, there were no capital expenses, but we have, as I recall, one street sweeper, and so, as a minimum, we need more street sweepers. And if you're going to do street sweeping properly, you're going to have to put up signs on every block, so to inform parkers on when the street sweeper will be coming by, so that you can do the entire street and not leave a lot of residue and sediment behind. And then, you're going to need some enforcement of those hours, so you're going to need somebody to go out and tick it, or tow, whatever you decide to do, but that's going to add to the cost. And then also, I was reading the paper today, and they were talking about backyard ale hosing the debris out, and will you be considering not allowing people to use hoses to clean their impervious surfaces? Because that does wash a lot of sediment and things down, so that... And then, will the capital budget of the city be used to pay for capital expenses? Or will the, if you go to an authority, will the authority do that for projects and other capital expenditures? I would like to know those. Now, back to SAPA. I'm not sure how well we've complied with the issues that, and so I'd like to highlight a few of them. Did we ever engage a consultant to conduct hydral- hydraulic, or, excuse me, and hydraulic assessments of the West Mountain and Kaiser Valley? Okay. That's in the plan that we were supposed to do. I'm guessing, because Lenny hasn't been here for a while, that probably that maybe something was fixed there, but do you know, Mr. Gunn, if Gene and the city engineer ever got together and were able to use Gene's thought on solving their issues over there?
The last I heard, they were supposed to meet, but I haven't heard anything since.
Have you followed up? Could you follow up with them and see if anything's happened?
Yep, certainly.
Okay. So I would like to know how SAPA, since we're still using them, at least for the new comprehensive plan, so we're still a member, I would like to know if that complements or conflicts with the stormwater plans contained in the Scranton, or in the current report we have here from Arcadis. Now, does Scranton currently have stormwater management components in our zoning ordinance that include water quality requirements that seek to improve the aquatic health of our watersheds?
I think there's information in the subdivision ordinance to that effect.
Okay, so that one's done. Okay. How many of the older neighborhoods that were built without adequate stormwater planning and infrastructure, such as much of the East Mountain, have they been updated? I know East Mountain Road area has, because that happened when the road was widened. But I'll bring the rest of them next week, along with some more on the Arcadis study. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
I'd like to thank Mr. Bolus for the letter in the paper, except I don't think he went far enough. It's, our government's being infested by a bunch of anti-Americans. Well, I came to talk about Mr. Hitten's office, and not adversely, I have no complaint with them. They have no power. They can give a citation, or a complaint, or something, they have no power after that. I was told it's your fault. Yeah, I don't know who, not you.
Sure you are.
Yeah, it could, probably is your fault.
Usually it's me, though. Come on.
Yeah, I just blame you and let the other gentleman go. The house across the street of me that's been condemned, now the owner, been cleaning it up, cleaning it up. The city code is, when your house is condemned, you can clean it out and leave. The next owner cannot go in that house till he puts up the performance bond. And we've had people in here. Am I right so far? That's all. Personally, I think this sort of keeps some people from buying condemned property, but that's another story. This man has defrauded the people of this city with his illegal dumping, week after week after week, and cleaning up the house, and Mr. Hitten's offices tried to get him out of there. He just keeps coming back. And he got mad at me Saturday and come into my backyard to yell at me, "What business is it of me?" Of, it's none of my concern, and blah, blah, yada, yada, so I had to use my potty mouth to get rid of him. What I'm getting to, you people, these people out here, we paid to have his stuff hauled off, and it would have filled a dumpster, believe me. Week after week, there was more junk in front of that house than my whole block put together, and I'm not exaggerating. What needs to be done is bring him to the magistrate. Of course, he had to brag to me how much power he has in the city, a big bag of hot air. And if it's possible, I'll sign a complaint. This man took two condemned signs off the house, and I was out in the yard getting my garbage cans on a Tuesday afternoon, when he ripped one of them off, the lady put another one back on, and he scraped that one off, and she put a third one on. So he well knows what the law is. I mean, there's no question about it. He telling me he can stay there from morning to night, but you can't. And like I said, I don't really agree with it, but the law's the law, like seat belts, you're supposed to put them on. And one other thing, I don't know how many, I was listening to this talk, there's a pile of salt down in Hanover. I'd say it's four or five times bigger than the Globe Store. Have you ever seen that bomb at DMS, that pile of salt for the streets? Am I telling the truth? It's bigger, it's huge. At the end of the year, it's gone. Millions of pounds of salt, all the little cities all around here, you know where it goes? Into the Lackawanna River. What sense is there, all this cleaning up, when the salt's pouring in there? Right here are pictures of this same man dumping down at the river, a dozen, fifteen loads. The city told him to clean it up, he didn't do it. You know what happened to half of them? Anybody want to make a guess? In the spring floods, all that trash he dumped, about half of it washed into the river, that we're paying to keep clean. Because there's no power to make him pick it up, I guess. I think, I think you've got, if anyone wants to see the pictures, they're right here, is him dumping, pictures of him, not, not the crap that he dumped. I got a picture of him on a scooter dumping.
Mr. Elman, if...
This is shameful.
Did you file a police report on the individual dumping in the river?
Well, whatever. I just, I just try to get, we need to have some teeth into Mr. Hitten's office, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Elman, and as I mentioned, if you haven't filed, if you have pictures of somebody illegally dumping, I would encourage you to file a police report, because that's something the police should be looking into as well.
Well, I don't know the legalities, but I do know...
Mr. Elman, your time is up. Thank you.
Yeah, I do know what they tell me from Mr. Hitten's office, and this man has broken the law repeatedly.
Thank you.
At your expense. Thank you.
Bob Bolus is our next speaker.
Bob Bolus, Scranton. Doesn't get any better than this place. On B, the garbage fee, to me, it's a taxation without representation. There's no accounting where the money goes, why it's costing us so much more money when fuel is down, operational costs are all down, yet we're still paying $300 more. We have no idea where the money went, not only this money, but the money from our taxes are gone, that we pay to have our garbage picked up. This is an absolute joke, and somebody needs to find it. Baldini, maybe you should start looking where the real skeletons are, instead of pushing the peas around the pot. I would ask council to ask Kim to give us a complete forensic accounting of all the money that's going toward the garbage fee, so we know once and for all that we're not getting raped here anymore. You know, what I heard here tonight is a bunch of salesmen, that's all they are, how do we fill our coffers? Not ours, theirs. You know, the rain tax is an absolute joke. It's a natural occurrence, just like a snowstorm, a tornado, or hurricane. You don't get taxed if a hurricane came through here, or a tornado came through. What classifies stormwater? What classifies it as a storm? A regular rainfall, is that considered a storm? Winds over 60 miles an hour? What classifies stormwater? We don't have that definition, and you guys need to get that definition. We don't need to listen to salesmen anymore. We don't need to listen to people coming in and saying, "We need another authority." We screwed up how many authorities already? The parking authority, the store authority, the rec authority? Now you want to have a stormwater authority? With a bunch of characters that are going to run it, take hundreds of thousands of dollars in their salaries, while we, the people, get screwed over again because we didn't do it right? This is a job for the city of Scranton. This is for us to hire our own people, govern it under our own operations, operation under DEP, and we need to do the job. We're not incompetent around here, we don't need people like this to tell us how to do something. We spend millions and millions of dollars between this and the school district, and now we're going to worry about rain on our roof? It's an absolute fool's move for anybody to even accept that. So to sit here and say we're going to go along with something like this, I think is the most assinante thing I heard tonight. It's just another way for people to screw us over on the tax dollars. Take your senior citizen, they just got a raise in social security, but they're going to pay their money for a rain tax. So what did they gain? In fact, it winds up costing them more money. So it doesn't justify, none of this justifies to listen to this garbage anymore. We've listened to it, and listened to it, and listened to it. With the store authority, look where you are, look where you are with the parking garages. Mr. Gunn, I hate to keep bringing this up, but one day I want you to give me the answer, excuse me, where did our millions of dollars go to Vassalig and the parking garage, that we have to kiss their butts to park in that space that we paid for? I'd like you to give me an answer, once and for all, so I don't have to keep bringing it up. This is something you initiated, this is something you were involved with sending a letter to get us an answer. We want unrestricted parking in that garage, because we paid for it. That's all I ask, or get our money back.
I think I can answer your question, if you want me to, right now, or I can do it in fifth order.
Whenever you want to do it. I don't want to lose my time here tonight.
Well, then I'll wait till fifth order, I don't want to interrupt you.
Okay. You know, this past weekend, we had St. Patrick's Day Parade. We've had political races going on. I wrote a letter defending Frank Scavo, because I've spent time in those countries, about radical Islamic Muslims that cut off your head, have no care about human beings, and he was unjustly attacked, just like you guys would be, just for making a statement and don't put it in the right context, but your meaning was there. To turn around and do that was wrong. Another attack was on Commissioner Cummins, by the people who want to smoke recreational marijuana. I'm against it, as a company, as an individual. She stood up for it. Our trailer was parked there during the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and they ripped her sign off the trailer while it was parked downtown Scranton. That's what we got to deal with in this town, a bunch of potheads who don't understand, we have our rights, not just what they want for their rights. And we're going to deal with them, because the police have surveillance cameras on it.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
The other part, if I may just take a second, is with Hitten, with the NAOG issue, it should be put out for bid, because right now, under the new rules, it's an ethics violation. And I think our police did a hell of a job, and they should be commended, and I'd like to do that personally, for what they did and the way they controlled the crowds and everybody during this parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Reddick?
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time tonight, certainly appreciate it. Just wanted to give council and the residents of Scranton a quick update on something I've been working on for roughly the past two months or so. So you may already be aware that I have formally launched the Downtown Scranton Residents Association, in hopes just to get the collaborative group of all of us that are currently living in downtown, as well as anybody else in other neighborhoods, that certainly feel free to join. But we unfortunately had a snowstorm last month, which was supposed to be our inaugural meeting, so just to give you a brief update, Wednesday, March 20th, at 6:00 PM, at the Leonard Theater on Adams Avenue, we will be hosting our first official meeting. We will be having Scranton tomorrow as our guest speaker for the evening, so Liz Baldi, who's their project manager currently, will be coming in to give us a brief update on current projects that they're working on, what to expect in the future, and any questions that they might be willing to entertain at that point. So I'd like to formally invite council members to feel free at any time to stop on in any of our meetings. It's looking like it's going to be the third Wednesday of every month, I'm going to try and stick with that schedule for the time being, but I would encourage you to check out the Facebook page. I would gladly be willing to circulate a monthly flyer to council members if you're interested. But other than that, that's all I really have. If there's any questions about the association, I'd be happy to answer it.
No, thank you for doing that, by the way. I think it's long overdue, and I think it's going to be highly successful, so good luck.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Les Spender?
Good evening, council. Les Spender, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Well, I agree with one thing Bob said, and I disagree with one thing. I agree with him on the garbage fee. Many of you know, I've been coming here for year after year after year, saying it's illegal. We pay our taxes to have our garbage picked up. We shouldn't be paying another tax, and it's a tax, it's not a fee. That's just how they're trying to get around it. And you people don't do anything about it. You say you're going to do it, but you don't, like everything else, like other stuff I'm going to bring up, too. I disagree with him about the Muslim comment. You're going to be a public official, you can't make racist comments like that, whether it's freedom of speech or whatever. You shouldn't be a public official making racist comments. That's all I'm going to say on that. Last year, I came here and I said about the Chip Hack funeral home being up for sale, and I said, "Bite the university's grant and they'll buy it." And I think someone up there, it might have been you, Councilman Rogan, said that Chip Hack said they won't sell it to the university. Well, they lied. The university bought it. Another tax-paying property off the tax, off the tax rules. When is this going to end? And again, you people do nothing about it. Scranton Prep bought the AAA building downtown, since they moved out of town. It's another one off the tax rules. When's it going to end? Pretty soon, there's going to be no tax-paying properties downtown. It's just getting out of control, and we, the taxpayers, are the ones paying for it. It's ridiculous. You people say, "Oh, we'll do something, we're going to..." The nonprofits have to pay their fair share. What the university's grant gives us is a drop in the bucket. It's ridiculous. For the money they bring in, what, they give us less than $200,000 a year? It's nothing. So you people have to get on the ball and do something, help the taxpayers out. Next thing, I watched a meeting last week, and I felt terrible about these people that live down by the Keystone Mission. These people shouldn't have to live like that. It's ridiculous. And I read in the paper that it was never approved to be a mission, for 13 years they've been doing this, and it should have been shut down years ago. This thing can't be continued like that. These people, I just don't know how they put up with it. It's a darn shame, they pay taxes, and they have to put up, the people go to the bathroom on their property, throwing up on their property. It's uncalled for. It's ridiculous. And I know you people have tried to do something, and some of the people said, "Yo, it's been going on for years." And you're right, Councilman Rogan, it was just brought to light in December, last December. So I know you are trying. I do feel bad for those people, and... I do feel bad for those people. Please, try to help us out and get after these nonprofits. It's been going on for too long, and we can't keep paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Norton?
How you doing, guys? You folks are good enough to go ahead and listen to me about the sewer issue I have over our way, Rundle Street, between St. Anne's and Loomis. What takes place is when we do have stormwater and storms, the sewers, if the check valves don't shut, a lot of people get raw sewage and the overflow into their basements, which in turn has to get pumped out, which winds up going down, plain old right down the street. So you're dealing with the raw sewage issue going right down the main avenue. Okay? But anyways, I did get a response from the water company, and pretty much what they said is they're not going ahead and saying anything dealing with the sewers. What they're calling it is a storm and flooding issue. Okay? Everything goes into the hundred-year-old sewers, which have, up in the 1400 block, they have pumps that I am assuming just kick in to go ahead and push the sewage and the water downstream without any kind of flow limitation. So anyways, I did get a response from the water company. This idea, again, with what everybody's been saying about another authority. We went around in circles for thirty years with the old sewer authority. Didn't get any satisfaction on the hundred-year-old sewers. Right now, we're still in the same boat. PG, or, excuse me, the water company is calling it a storm issue. They're not calling it a sewer issue. So I basically need you folks to go ahead and, or go ahead and state that it is one combined sewer system, that until they get more lines in, that's the way it's going to be. And hopefully, we could get the, pretty much, six blocks are affected with this flooding. And I've been dealing with this for thirty years. Pretty much, how do you go ahead and try and sell your house to anybody within, to try and go ahead and advance it, if you know that there is a raw sewage problem that nobody wants to go ahead and help take care of? And that's, that's a whole lot of residential people over there that are dealing with the same issue. But anyways, I did get a response. I want to thank Mr. Gahan and you folks for going ahead and looking into it, and that's pretty much where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Once again, I won't call everybody a nonprofit. I'll call them a tax-exempt, as in everybody, that fails, doesn't pay taxes. And it could be a federal building. It could be a university. It could be a church. Or it could be some entity which does some type of work, a state building, a courthouse. And once again, we need, so we can get the city economics on track, is that we need a description of how many tax-exempts can exist in a city and what the percentage is. Because if you read the article from two weeks ago in the Scranton Times, some towns have a few, and we have many. We're starting to approach forty percent tax exempt. So once again, consider the value of going to the Supreme Court, federal Supreme Court, and getting a ruling, and hopefully, it'll go in our favor. If it doesn't, we'll have to change the name to the Extreme Court. I listened to most of the storm sewer. And it's too bad we didn't have even a few of these caucuses when the sale of the sewer plant was discussed, and we might have a lot less consternation over that. And if we do set up an authority, it should be answered to our council. And I hear a lot of regional, "Well, I have some questions there." Maybe we have to argue for service while other people get taken care of earlier, and will we have problems like we're just discussed here? Ignore it year in and year out. And maybe we're better off on our own. And also, during this caucus here, I noticed that it's really hard to hear anything anybody's saying at this table. And with the addition of, and I think I see one there, an extended XLR cable for microphones. It handles both passive and condenser microphones. I'm pretty sure that's a powered microphone here. They cost about twenty bucks. Could we possibly ever get two microphones extended over to that table so that everybody can hear it? They're pointed towards you folks, and you can barely, barely pick up what they're saying. I could read the...
We did have, I think this actually was our first public meeting, when the new microphone was on. I know Councilman Evans was instrumental in getting the new mics, if you want to address that.
You could actually use any of these mics.
Well, what happens though, Dave, is that it was always difficult to pass the microphones around because it was, you know, you had to pass it from person to person.
Yeah. But if you had, say, four people, set one in between two people...
We have two flat surface mics that go on the table, and it picks up for the TV, but we have to turn down the monitors because there's feedback. So we're still working, we're still tweaking that system right now. So we'll find a way to sort of get that up a little bit louder to allow for more audience, you know, so they can hear in the audience as well. But right now, it's still a work in progress.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's in the past, but that's what you would need, a fifteen-foot XLR cable or twenty-foot. And they cost about twenty to twenty-five dollars. I'm sure with all our recent tax increases, we could afford it, hopefully. Shame on us if we can't. But this tax-exempt business is really, I mean, I was sitting back there thinking, "Oh, if we have a regional authority, maybe we could locate this big tax-exempt building in Scranton." Wouldn't that be great? All righty, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of comments. I just want to throw a thank you out to DPW for the great work for the parade, preparing for it and cleaning up afterwards. And of course, I think as already mentioned here, the police department did a fantastic job keeping everybody safe at the parade like they always do. Our parade is, is one of our centerpieces of the year, and I think it was, it was a great time. The weather broke just in time for it, so I'm glad a lot of families came out. We had a lot of crowd, and hopefully, a lot of business and commerce took place as well. Also, nonprofits were brought up again. I think they're, you know, the first step for me in nonprofit reform, the easiest and the lowest hanging fruit, I would assume, would be the nonprofits who operate for-profit business within that facility. I think that square footage should be deemed to be taxable. They're making money, they're earning, they're doing commerce there, so that should be taxable. That should be something that we should be able to, to work with, with the state to get reform there. That would be my first bite at the apple when it comes to nonprofits. I know it is a, it's a sore subject, it's top, you know, they're good neighbors to us, they're needed in our community, but you know, it does get a little discouraging sometimes when we see them buying a property. But, you know, I think we brought up the AAA building that Scranton Prep bought. I would much rather see it being used and being utilized instead of being barren and open. But, you know, having a business in there would, would definitely be a plus as well. So I, it's a, it's a tight, it's a tight wiggle room there, but I think the nonprofits, the first thing we need to do is start looking at reform for that for-profit center that they do run. Well, the real meat of the meeting happened during our caucus about stormwater. We got the Arcadis review. I want to thank Mr. Dill from Arcadis, Mr. Cross from Pell, Senator Blake was here, and of course, our own business administrator, Mr. Bolzoni. There was a lot of information that came out today. There was a lot of good discussion going on. I took a lot of notes. A couple of the highlights that I want to talk about. Something that was asked to me was credits for commercial businesses who already did infrastructure work to hold their own water. They were, they were, I don't want to say upset, but they were anxious on what was this report going to say, and how much were they going to have to pay when they already had to succumb to other regulations to hold their own water? So I was happy to hear that there is going to be a credit procedure for these businesses who went through those steps. That will lessen their, their, their pay as far as their ERUs go. Now, for residential, it's going to be basically fixed. I believe Mr. Lockwood, I talked to Mr. Lockwood, he had a nice piece in the paper about this. He had, he got the information out fairly early for us. And it, you know, all these are estimates. My biggest question is, are these estimates going to hold true? I'm always concerned with, you know, the bait and switch tack. Sometimes we get shown one thing, but something else actually comes to fruition. So I just want to stay with this and make sure that it is as it's presented. I understand there's a scale, and it's going to slide a little bit, and if we get a regional authority, that might help us. I know that even having the city take over DPW, that was an option that they took off the table. So we'll dig into a little bit of that. Why did they take it off the table? I'm guessing it was just going to be too expensive to hire and, and take care of it ourselves, but those are valid questions that we should ask to see before we impose a new fee. You know, as far as fees and taxes goes, you know, they normally go up and get added. They very rarely go down and disappear. So we need to do our due diligence before we, before we levy a new fee. Even at eight dollars a quarter or thirty-two dollars a year, whether it's nominal or not, and it goes to a good cause, and I understand that. I just don't like the precedent that it sets, that now there's a new regulation, so now there's a new fee. So is, next time we have a regulation, are we going to have a new fee? So that, that's what I want to make sure that we're not getting in over our heads here with that. You know, there's a lot of work to be done on our, on our stormwater. We had a gentleman here, there's, you know, there's always issues. I think we talked about this in our caucus. We had a heck of a summer with a lot of flooding. Our, our hundred-year system just can't hold the amount of rain that we get anymore. I believe the number was 130,000 linear feet of stormwater that we have that's 100 years old, that's going to have to be maintained, replaced. And they're estimating our stormwater budget to be 1.44 million dollars a year. So again, that's a budget. We know that, that could go up, that could go down, but again, we're, we're in our infancy of this. We, we got the report, and there's a couple of next steps, and the very next step that was established was going to be setting up the, the authority, whether it be regional or just local. And then once that domino falls, we'll, we'll have a clear picture of what the next step and how fast things will happen. But I'm sure my fellow councilmen will have more to say on this as well, and will have more to say on this in the future. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes. I'd also first like to thank the Scranton Police Department, as well as DPW for a job well done on Saturday. The police department did a tremendous job keeping the downtown safe and secure, and the DPW has once again on top of their game to get the downtown cleaned up in a timely fashion. Also, over the weekend at the parade, the restored Showmobile made its debut, and I have to say, I couldn't be more disappointed and quite frankly disgusted in the finished product. Instead of using the Showmobile's much-needed restoration as an opportunity to promote the city as a whole, the mayor chose to instead only promote himself. If you haven't seen it yet, head over to the mayor's Facebook page and check out the pictures and judge for yourself. Given that, Ms. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to the mayor asking how much the restoration of the Showmobile costs taxpayers? And also if he plans on reimbursing the city for using past taxpayer money for personal gain? Moving on, just to touch on the issues that the neighbors are having with the Keystone Mission on Olive Street. I did drive by there a couple times last week, and I did get to see a little of what the neighbors down there are dealing with on a daily basis. And I absolutely feel their pain, because personally, I wouldn't want to have to deal with that, you know, around my house either. But at the same time, I'm not convinced that the mission is the main cause of the issue. I believe it might contribute to it, but I don't believe it's the main cause. That wooded area along the train tracks around the river and Heritage Trail has long been an area where the homeless population tend to set up their camps. So I believe that in order to get, to address the issues that the residents of that neighborhood are dealing with, the city has to figure out a way to do a better job of working with nonprofits, nonprofits and social service agencies, to provide the resources necessary to help get as many of our homeless as possible off the streets. And I'm hopeful we could begin that discussion. On stormwater, I want to thank Arcadis, Senator Blake, and also the administration, Mr. Bolzoni, for coming to tonight's presentation. And I think it's extremely important to reiterate that this is the beginning of this discussion. The next stage is getting the engineering study done to figure out what, what is needed on our current system. Also, we do need a timeline, some sort of timeline from American Water on when they plan on separating the current combined system, because as they separate it, those lines come online and are the city's responsibility under their MS4 permit. But in the meantime, it's imperative that we begin looking at ways to, of successfully establishing a regional stormwater authority. I truly believe that a regional approach is the only way to effectively manage stormwater. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A few comments. A few weeks ago, Councilman Donahue and I attended a demonstration of a service called ClearGov.com. This is a platform that will provide additional transparency to our citizens and how government is performing, especially on the financial side. It combines information provided by the city with existing data, like census information, to provide a clear and user-friendly interface for everyone who chooses to access it. When this becomes a reality for the city, it will become another piece in our continuing effort at creating what is called an open data mindset in Scranton. This is where the spirit of, in the spirit of transparency, data is freely available for almost anyone to use. Across the country, there is a movement to create these open data cities and communities. And believe it or not, Scranton can be a leader in this movement. Council initiatives like Granicus, which for the first time has given citizens immediate online access to our agendas, as well as supporting and backing information. This has been up and running for quite some time with city council, and we hope at some point, it can be expanded to all the boards and commissions, as well as individual departments within the city. Additionally, we expect to see C Click Fix implemented soon. This simple concept starts with a citizen-facing app that allows reports to, citizens report quality of life issues directly to the responsible city department. And at the same time, the residents will be kept informed as to the progress of the request through the same app. On the city side, it would streamline work processes and communication to citizens and to each other. The analytics provided through this app will provide another open data source and will provide for immediate improvements in workflow and a better decision-making process as where to resources should be allocated. Another initiative that we expect to happen this year, the smart city kiosk concept, will provide additional information about activities around the city. This information will be literally at citizens' and visitors' fingertips, with interactive touchscreens located initially throughout the downtown. On the street side, on the on-street parking side, we are pursuing a technology-driven kiosk-style system instead of the broken-down meter system currently in effect. I would expect a tremendous amount of the data that will be provided, so informed decisions then can be made on parking almost immediately in the future. All of these are either in place, starting soon, or should happen in 2019. And an important byproduct will be more data for everyone to review and everyone to share. These type of open data initiatives and policies are all things that this city council has long advocated for. We know that knowledge is, or data is knowledge, and knowledge can be power, the kind of power... We know that knowledge is, or data is knowledge, and knowledge can be power, the kind of power that should make all of us, citizens, elected officials, city employees, more responsive, more efficient, and more informed. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, we received three applications from residents that were interested in being members of the Ethics Board. The deadline was today at 4:30 PM. So council will review those cover letters and resumes, and then I'm sure we'll make a decision within the next, I'd assume, week or two. So I'll keep everybody posted on that. We did receive from Mr. Bolzoni an update on the, the signs. I think Mrs. Jeffries asked about that last week. The company that was contracted to do that work is almost finished with the GPS mapping. And then according to Mr. Bolzoni, what's going to take place is all that information will be uploaded into a database and the city will replace the signs section by section, hopefully starting in the spring. Regarding the question with the parking authority, I think I have an answer for that. The way that Mr. Bullis brought up the, the 500 parking spaces, the way that I understand that is, the way the deal worked, the parking authority was going to sell to Steamtown 300 LLC, the Electric City Garage. So the Scranton Parking Authority entered into two separate lease agreements with Steamtown 300. The first one was a lease agreement for 500 dedicated parking spaces within the Steamtown Mall garages. The second one was a lease agreement for all parking spaces within the Electric City Garage. The spaces that Mr. Bullis is referring to were incorporated as a component of the public parking system and NDC was entitled to 100% of any of the revenue generated. So I don't know if that, that answers your question, but there's not, I don't think there's 500 dedicated parking spaces per se that you or I could go in and park at. They're, they're just, you could park anywhere within the Steamtown parking garage. Any revenue from that goes to NDC because they're the company, is the nonprofit that, that runs the garage. The second question regarding Mr. Hinton, that, that whole process was actually bid out. It was publicly bid. I know that's been mentioned a couple of times, but it wasn't in the newspaper because when that whole thing had come up, we had researched that. So that was publicly bid. Mrs. Schumacher and Ms. Hodowanitz had several questions regarding the stormwater analysis. If you wouldn't mind putting those in writing or sending them via email, and I'll do my best to try to get those answered and forward them to the appropriate parties. I'd also like to make a motion to put the stormwater analysis in third order for next, the next council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, or I'm sorry, on the question?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
In regards to the, the stormwater meeting that was held tonight, just, just a few observations. The first one is, you know, I didn't think that we had enough time to ask enough questions. I had more questions. I'm going to get together, put them in writing with Mr. Dill and Mr. Bolzoni. But I would ask in the future if those meetings could be at least an hour or an hour and a half. There was a lot of information presented there. I just don't think we had enough time for the back and forth. As I mentioned during the meeting, this idea of a stormwater tax or a rain tax, whatever you want to call it, is inherently unfair. You know, the, it's an unfunded mandate from the federal government and they're just kind of wiping their hands and letting the municipalities and the boroughs kind of fend for themselves. And this rain tax or stormwater tax is going to hurt the older communities in Pennsylvania, industrial, old industrial cities like ourselves the most because we have the oldest infrastructure. And I just think that if the government is going to impose something like this, a mandate like this, then they should do more to help fund it. Spend some of the millions of dollars that they throw around every place else and put it into the infrastructure here in the city and up and down the East Coast where, where we're going to be affected here. I'm also, you know, a little bit skeptical about creating another authority. I think Mr. Norton mentioned, you know, the Scranton Sewer Authority, different authorities that we've had in the city. I just am skeptical that that's going to work. Another bureaucracy instituting a fee, collecting a fee. I think Ms. Hodowanitz mentioned, you know, is it going to be $8 forever? When, my question during the meeting was, when does this type of thing end? What's the end game? What's the goal? I know there are certain requirements. This is something that we're going to have to do because it is a mandate, but I just think it is inherently unfair, especially in light of the, the situation that we find ourselves in in the city, where you have a school district that is increasing taxes, a city that I'm assuming in the next few years, taxes are going to have to go up. Our payroll does not go down. It goes up at least over $1 million every year. The county hasn't raised taxes in a few years. Certain, they're going to have to raise taxes, especially with the stormwater responsibilities that they're going to have. So, you know, I just, I, I find it really unfair. The other thing that struck me was the regional authority. I wonder how realistic that is. And I question why that, why those conversations haven't taken place already. You know, this is, this has been no secret, the, the MS4 permit requirements, this analysis that was done tonight, and the fact that just now, we're going to start reaching out is a concern. And I wonder how realistic it is at this point that other boroughs and municipalities would join in anyways. I did mention a article in the caucus. There is a state representative from Kingston who is actually, wrote a letter to the Attorney General saying that the EPA mandate violates the Federal Unfunded Mandates Reform Act of 1995. That's from an article just from today. I don't know where that will go, but I do know that all of the, a lot of the people down in Luzerne County are outraged about this whole thing, and rightfully so. So is it going to happen? Yes, because it's a mandate, but I don't think, I just don't think it's fair. And I think that, you know, we as a council and hopefully the mayor can reach out to all of our elected officials in Congress and in the Senate and implore them to find funding for this and give us more help. Because we cannot have our citizens continue to shoulder the burden for all of these type of projects that the government wants to stick in our lap and then kind of look the other way. So we'll keep following it moving forward, but I just, I'm very skeptical about the whole thing at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a brief comment on the stormwater caucus, and I did make these comments during, during that part of the meeting as well. And I know a number of my colleagues have hit on these points as well. Unfortunately, the stormwater regulations are indeed a federal mandate and an unfunded mandate at that. This issue is not unique to Scranton. As Councilman Gahn mentioned, Luzerne County had had a, quite a bit of controversy about how they handled it down there. So all municipalities in the Chesapeake Bay watershed have to comply with these federal regulations to clean up the water that's being dumped into our rivers that eventually dump into the Chesapeake watershed. So that's what this whole issue is about. And unfortunately, it's very, very costly to do this. We have a system in our city, which one of the speakers brought up, which, there's a lot of combined system. Much of that was sold off in the sewer transaction, but there's still a large portion of the system that the city's responsible for currently. And as time goes on, as those systems do become separated, the city will be responsible either through an authority, through the city, a regional authority, or through our Department of Public Works in maintaining all of that system. It's my understanding that the actual permit, which is called an MS4 permit, has to be held by a government agency or a nonprofit, I'm sorry, a government agency or an authority. It can't be held by a private company. So my general solution when there's a problem is to privatize it. So unfortunately, in this case, that can't fully be done. But I do think that we should look at public-private partnerships if, instead of creating an authority, if it's possible that this work can be bid out in some fashion. I think that's another solution that, that we could look at. Again, the government always seems to do things, it takes longer and it costs more money than what could be done in the private sector. But as was mentioned by my colleagues, this is the first of many discussions on this topic. Unfortunately, unless there is a court case that results in a win, which you know could take many, many years, we are going to have to live with this mandate from the federal government. So it's, it's our job to take all these different ideas and to come up with a solution that works, works best, not only for the homeowners, but also for businesses within our city, who if you watch the presentation, they're going to be hit pretty hard by that as well. So there'll be much more to come on that issue, and that is all. Thank you.
5B, excuse me, for introduction, an ordinance amending file of the council number 17, 2018, amending file of the council number 4, 2018, entitled, an ordinance amending file of the council number 17, 1994, entitled, an ordinance as amended, authorizing the governing body of the city of Scranton to enact a waste disposal and collection fee for the purpose of raising revenue to cover the waste disposal and collection costs incurred by the city of Scranton for the disposal of refuse by imposing a waste disposal and collection fee of $300 for calendar year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter, to extend the May 1, 2019 discount date to May 31, 2019, to enable residents to take advantage of the 10% discount when paying their refuse bill in full.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, I'll be voting to introduce this legislation tonight, but I will not be voting for final passage. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed the council number 58, 2019, an ordinance authorizing the installation of two, two-hour parking-only restrictions directly in front of 934 Beach Street, Zaleski's Clubhouse Cafe.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed the council number 57, 2019, amending file of the council number 50, 2018, an ordinance amending file of the council number 22, 2016, an ordinance entitled, defining and authorizing tax exemptions from real property tax in order to stimulate residential, commercial, and other business activity in certain areas in the city of Scranton, establishing an exemption schedule and procedures for obtaining exemptions, providing for non-permissible exemptions, and limiting amendment thereto, in order to expand the eligible areas, increase the duration of each exemption, and to lift the cap on each exemption by deleting Section 7, non-permissible, in its entirety due to a clerical error.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 105, 2019, authorizing the Department of Public Works foreman, Christopher Jenkins, to act as agent for city of Scranton for emergency and disaster relief pursuant to the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, and authorizing city officials to execute the designation of agent and the PMA Public Disaster Assistance Application and Agreement for Financial Assistance.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 106, 2019, accepting a donation from John F. Kennedy Elementary School students in the amount of $250 to the city of Scranton Police Department for their Scranton Police SRO Summer Camp.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, resolution number 107, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a cooperation agreement between the United States of America and the city of Scranton for rehabilitation of non-federal flood control work in Scranton, Pennsylvania, on Scranton Stafford Meadowbrook.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
This meeting is adjourned.